Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. May I have your attention, please? Welcome to the City Club Forum. My name is Herb Camm. I'm president of the City Club. Our program today is being devoted to a discussion of the latest crisis in the Cleveland Last week, I said if we didn't have a crisis at the time I made the announcement, we surely have one this week. Maybe the title should be "The Latest Crises." Take your choice. We are fortunate to have two members of the School Board with us, both of whom were elected to the Board in November: Albaty Ted Bonda and Stanley Tolliver. Each of them will speak for 15 minutes, after which we will have our customary question-and-answer session. It is my privilege, first of all, to introduce to you the president of the School Board, Ted Bonda. Ted was named to the School Board by Judge Talty in August of last year and elected to the School Board, leading the ticket in the November election, and was subsequently elected president of the School Board. Ted generally is referred to in the public print as the millionaire president of the School Board, but it really is much more appropriate to refer to him as the philanthropic president of the School Board. And you can cut that any way you want. When you serve on the School Board, it is indeed a form of philanthropy. He's a native Clevelander who went to school in Glenville. He was co-founder of the Airport Parking Company, former chairman of the Board of Avis, and he has really been involved in a host of civic and philanthropic activities in our community. He's a director of the Cleveland Growth Association, the Jewish Community Federation, Mount Sinai Hospital, and a fellow of Brandeis University. And it is not exaggerating in the least to say when there's a good cause, Ted Bonda is involved. There is, however, no truth whatever to the report that he goes to sleep every night listening to the dulcet music of a song titled "Here Comes the Judge." Without further ado, and without risking my friendship any further with Albaty Ted Bonda, it is indeed a great pleasure to present to you the president of the Cleveland Board of Education, Mr. Ted Bonda.
Thank you, Herb. That was one of the nicer ones from you. When he said that, when I saw that the title of the speech was "The Latest Crisis in the School Board," I said to Herb, "Are you kidding me? It's one continuous crisis. There is no latest. There's no beginning and there's no ending, though I hope there will be an ending." Titles of speeches are sometimes funny. Yesterday, I spoke to the Junior League, and the title they gave me, and they handed it to me as I got there, was "Education in the 21st Century." First, I'm not an educator. Second, the education I got was closer to the 19th century than the 21st century. I decided, though, I'd like, what would it be like if this were the 21st century? And I'd like to have a little fantasy about it, if I may. You can spare me a few minutes for that. It's now June 1st in the year 2000. The reason I picked June 1st is it's my birthday, and it was my 83rd birthday. And it's also my 18th year on the School Board. The reason it's my 18th year, nobody else would take it. And as a matter of fact, all other members quit, except Ken Semnitor. They all quit in the year 1999, but we've been arguing since then, who should be president. And in the year 2000, the Board had two presidents. It was my birthday, so my wife came in with a note, and on the note it said, "Happy Birthday, Ted." And the reason she brought in a note is she hasn't spoken to me for 18 years since I went on the School Board. I also got one other birthday congratulations. My very dear friend Senator Howard Metzenbaum called me and said, "Happy Birthday." And then he said, "Ted, there's an election in the year 2000 for Senate. Would you help me raise money?" It's also the year 2000, and I'm still trying to fire George Mazzaro. We had a budget deficit that year of a little less than $1 billion. The reason it was so large is that the state was stone cold broke and couldn't come up with the monies we needed. But they were all right, because they loaned us $983 million and 47 cents. So they were able to almost make out that year. And they were relatively safe, because they owed us really $1.8 million to take care of their share of the cost of the desegregation cost, which the judge has ordered. Ken Semnitor, who was always very sharp as a lawyer, attached some property and assets that the state had to make up for the monies that we didn't get. So in the year 2000, we owned an eroded shoreline, all of Ohio's roads, including their potholes and chuck holes, and the school retirement fund, which was depleted. In addition, because of our deficit, Dave McClurkin is sitting over there, and he's the state financial administrator for us, and he said, "You must fire 125 of the last 250 teachers you have." It wasn't that bad, because by that time, we only had 10,000 students. And they were housed in 123 schools, because the court and the Office of School Monitoring couldn't agree on a plan to close schools. And we were transporting all of those 10,000 kids in 1,100 buses, because we couldn't come to an agreement with the unions as to what to do with the drivers. The parties on the reorganization were still meeting, and they thought that within another two weeks, they might have an agreement as to whether we can go ahead with the reorganization plan. The search committee that we appointed to seek out a new superintendent was very promising, though, and they said they would soon have an announcement for us as to who they would Well, that was the way it went in 2000. And just to finish off what happened in the year 2000, my good friend Herb Camm over here, who retired in 1982, is spending his retirement writing 14 different daily columns for the press, and in addition, has 12 television programs.
That's a lot.
Anything you'd like to. That's enough of the serious part of my talk. In truth, and I hope I'm not fooling myself, in spite of all our problems, we are making progress. Ed Young and I attended a meeting of all the parties and agreed on a reorganization plan. It will be submitted to the court on May 3rd, and the Board should approve it on May 6th. If the court approves it, as I hope they will do, we will have a unitary system by June 25th. The advisory superintendent search committee will officially start searching next week, and I expect submissions from them in the very near future. And I really expect our budget deficits will not go up towards $1 billion, but instead will go down considerably. The picture really looks somewhat rosier than it has been in quite a while. And as a matter of fact, Herb, there is no particular crisis this week. And it's Friday. It's been just nine months since I became a member of the Cleveland School Board, and almost four months since I took up the gavel as president of the Board. It's been a period in which I have developed a new appreciation of the enormous tasks which a school board, particularly the Cleveland School Board, faces. We are a board that has taken charge at a very unique point of history of this school district. There have never been the complexities, the demands, the requirements, and the depleted resources that are converging at this particular point of time. One other school district has been squeezed for almost two years between a dual administration, one mandated by a federal court order and reporting to a federal court, and the other established by the School Board and reporting to the School Board, which also reports to the federal court. We have been entangled in who controls what and who administers what, rather than what is good for our students. Tragically, we have been a house divided against itself at a time when the school district has needed a decisive, cohesive, and coherent leadership as never before in its history. Despite what you might read in the papers or hear on the TV, the seven members of the Board are really working very well together. We have our arguments, of course, and we have our differences, and a lot of people have different agendas, but we've accomplished a great deal since the Board took office in January. The individual members have learned their job, and they're taking charge of their committees. And in all truth, it's working out quite good, and I'm very pleased with it. I think it will continue to do so. Where should this school district be in 1985? Given our problems, what do we have to do to turn those things around? Who can help us turn the things around? First, I believe that there are some immediate steps which the Board of Education must and are taking, so that we may direct the administration to put our house in order. I see these steps as including: One, setting up priorities and reviewing our policies to identify where the school district should be going, and whether or not we have a policy in place to get us there. Two, coming up with an educational design and putting it in place for this district to improve student achievement and attendance. Three, communicating as we never have done before with the community, the parents, citizens, agencies, city and staff, city and state government, business and industry, to hear about needs, to guide this design, share information about our state of affairs, and collaborate in rebuilding our school district to benefit students. Four, reorganizing the district, not just for the sake of going through the motions, but to improve our fiscal and instructional management. Five, restoring fiscal responsibility and a sound financial base for schools in this district. Undoubtedly, schools in Cleveland, if we consider our philosophy of education, should develop students' knowledge, skills, and understanding in the essential academic areas so that students may read, compute, write, and think critically. In our zeal for these basics, however, we must not neglect these other basics: art, music, languages, cultures, health, technology, nutrition, physical activities, and the extracurricular opportunities that create the life in a schoolhouse. We cannot limit essentials to the three Rs in a society that is highly technological and complex. We need to develop informed, thinking citizens capable of participating in our Cleveland community, the nation, and the world. We need to weigh the possibility of possible changes in grade organization of the Cleveland schools. I am told this will have implications for better utilization of our school plants and the possible closing of more of our buildings. We cannot afford to continue passing students from grade to grade without their having learned the skills they need. As I have already indicated, the Board has to make clear what its policy will be in this matter. Certainly, we need to improve our maintenance of our school buildings so that classes are housed appropriately. We need to rebuild our vocational education programs. We need alternative methods, programs, and services when the regular approaches don't work. We need to improve our programs for exceptional students, special education, handicapped students, the disabled learners, and the gifted students. The state of Ohio has established its mission for the '80s to which school districts are to respond. An attendance policy and regulations for dealing with the chronically truant must be put in place by September 1982 by school districts. Our staff are now revising the several plans for improving attendance that we have proposed in our district recently. Thus far, we have kicked off a drive to improve attendance with the cooperation of Brown Stars, Reggie Rucker, Doug Deacon, and others. They're meeting with students all around town, and the Coca-Cola Company will be providing awards for the winning schools. Incidentally, yesterday, we also have, besides Reggie Rucker, who's absolutely wonderful, and Doug Deacon, Ron Bolton, Mike Pruitt, and Greg Pruitt. Unfortunately, at John Hay University the other day, Greg Pruitt was informed of his trade. It was a rather traumatic experience at that time. We need positive active support from parents for their children's education. Cleveland some years ago had a fairly good record in recruiting volunteers to help children with reading and math. We need to include parents in working with children, particularly receiving materials and guidelines for working with children at home, which I am told can be very successful for everyone so involved. There are implications that we should look at what we are doing in community relations. I see the emerging Community Relations and Community Resources Advisory Committee as offering vital input in this direction. Our present plans and even our current way to reporting to parents about student progress with only a piece of paper or a report card may require change so that we can increase ongoing communication with parents. We will need to become more expert in trimming fat from budgets as we move to fiscal responsibility by the Board of Education. As the Office of Management and Budget becomes more experienced, and as our financial accounting system, which we have been installing, takes form, we can hope for improved information to assist us in responding decisively and in a timely way to improve fiscal management of this district. We should have a chance to identify problems before they get out of hand. With our newly designed program budget, we can, for the first time, be able to contrast spending in various programs and service areas in this school district and to relate costs to outcomes. Undoubtedly, we will need to improve the financial base for our schools and get a levy passed. Hopefully, the community will see that the new Board of Education means business and will trust us to administer the increased support that these measures will bring the school district. Our newly organized legal department should help us to respond appropriately to ongoing litigation matters and to assist us in avoiding future potential litigation. We need today a reconstructed system, which can come, as I see it, through boardsmanship on the part of all members of the Cleveland School Board with a renewed support from the community. A strong school system will attract families and business to this city. My most fervent wish is that I will see the Cleveland Public Schools return to all that I remember it to be when it gave me my education. When will we realize that education of our children is a public good, and that we all will pay for ignorance and social injustice, just as we all pay for disease and crime? Thank you. I forgot one thing that happened in the year 2000. On June 1st, 2000, the Indians set a new record and won their 46th consecutive game. And the Yankees were 37 games behind with 122 yet to play.
Now you know it's fantasy. I have the honor now to introduce the second member of the Board of Education, Stanley Tolliver. Like Ted Bonda, Stan Tolliver is a native of Cleveland and was educated in his home community. He is a graduate of East Tech High and also of Baldwin Wallace College, and received his legal degrees at Cleveland Marshall Law. I'm also happy to note that Stan is an accomplished singer. I've heard him sing personally, and I've heard him sing in concert, and he indeed could qualify professionally, as well as in an amateur sense, as a musician of some considerable Considerable athlete in his day, too. Stan ran for East Tech High and also for Baldwin Wallace, and was state champion in the 440-yard dash in both high school and college. He also was anchorman on the state championship relay team. But apart from that, he, like Ted, pays his dues to the community in which he was born and raised, and to which he has given his devotion. Among other things, he's been very active in the Congress of Race Equality, the NAACP. He's a member of the Board of the Madonna Nursing Home. And I might add as well that he was the only black attorney who served on the legal staff that represented the defendants in the tragic Kent State shooting. He serves as chairman of both the Legal and Community Relations Committees in the Board of Education. Let us hear now from Stanley Tolliver.
Thank you so much, Mr. Camm. I was wondering who he was introducing. And I can tell by the response of the audience, Ted, that many of our employees are here. There'd better be. Unlike Mr. Bonda, I don't have any prepared notes. In true tradition from my Saudi town, I'm just gonna talk some nitty-gritty talk to I have never run in my life for any public office, not because I was afraid that I'd lose, but because I was afraid I'd win. But I feel an honor being on the Board with Ted Bonda, and I'm proud to say that I'm one of the four persons that voted for him. But let me say this: One of the most unpleasant things that I have ever done in my life was last Wednesday, when we had the special meeting where we had to lay off people. We asked people to become educated. They get bachelor's degrees, master's degrees, and some PhDs. They become involved in teaching, a position, a job which they are underpaid and overworked. Many of them have gotten into debt, buying homes, and other necessities in order to maintain some quality of life. And then because of the budget cuts and other reasons, we had to lay them off. And as a Baptist, I'm reminded of how we always talk about how Jesus has gone to a place to prepare a better place for us. And then I'm also reminded that the state of Ohio seemingly is preparing a place for those kids who do not get an education. $600 million has been set aside to build new penitentiaries in preparation of those who will not be educated. And yet Ted Bonda and some others, Joe T. Green, had to go down to Columbus and beg for 20-some million dollars to help our kids. And yet $600 million is set aside to build new penitentiaries. Now, in spite of all of that, progress is being made. Ted did not mention the fact that he has raised about $60,000 some thousand dollars from the corporate structure in order for our kids to have a summer athletic program. We shouldn't have to do that. There should be enough money, there should be enough commitment from the federal government and from the state of Ohio to our kids to make this kind of effort unnecessary. But being necessary, it was done. We are in the throes of a very unique situation. One of the things that I'm very proud of with this Board: Teachers and other personnel, for the first time, have felt that they can come and be very candid with us without fear of any recrimination. At one of our meetings that was chaired by Vice President Bertha Palmer, called the Education Committee, I invited some teachers to come and tell us what their frustrations were. And they came, because they didn't have to fear that anyone was gonna do anything to them, simply because they expressed themselves. Employees have felt now that they could talk to us in confidence and tell us some things that we needed to know. For you understand, one of the things I learned by being in the Army, I was a private, the generals never know what's happening in the trenches. The persons who work are the ones in the trenches. We are now the generals. We want to be a kind of a board that will talk with people and not down to them. We want to talk conservatively and constructively with people and not tell them what to do. So it was this kind of attitude that I had when we had to do what we had to do on Wednesday. Hopefully, as Ted said, a levy will pass, and hopefully, the Lord will speak to the man in Washington and unharden his heart, though he be Pharaoh at the moment, and calls us to get some money so that we can put all these people back to work. But in the meantime, we have to do the best we can with what we have. One of the things that I would also like to bring to your attention is that we have some good kids in this system. You have some kids who are outstanding in this system. And it grieves me that the kids who are having gangs and doing destructive things are the ones who get their pictures in the paper, and the kids who are doing constructive things get very little, if any publicity at all. One of the last things that we had at the last Board meeting prior to this one, we had some kids who had competed in the social studies contest from the state, and our kids won first, second, and third places in the state of Ohio. And Ted made a very strong comment. He beat me to it, but that's the prerogative of the president. He said, "I would hope that tomorrow we would see these kids' names in the paper." At the same time, there were some persons who had come from Martin Luther King and were talking about the chaotic situation over there. You know what got in the paper? The chaotic situation that Martin Luther King and not these good kids, who had brought honor to our city and to our schools by their conduct and their deportment and their commitment to excellence in the contest and social studies, and brought honor to our city. And that's one of the things that disturbs me. I see Carl Ellerman, who was one of my persons, I have started, and you know, this is some of my uniqueness, and you know I'm that. We have a parent subcommittee that works with my committee, and for the first time, we have parents telling us what they want. I see Mrs. Wallace, she's another one of my committee persons. You know, I believe in having an amen crowd when I go somewhere. And one of the things that they have embarked on, they are going, as parents, all over this city, and they're going to engage every person who wants to run for the United States Senate or for the United States Congress, for the state representative, or state senator, or governor. And they want to engage them in this conversation. What is your commitment to public education? Because in order for us to do the things that Ted has mentioned, we have to have an enlightened, we have to have a committed and involved community. And as I've told her many times, I want you to come to Board meetings and give us the devil, if that's what you want to do. But you have to understand that the budget cuts that we are suffering under, we did not cut ourselves. The cuts came from Washington and then through Columbus. And if you want us to have the money to do the things for our kids that needs to be done, you're gonna have to deal with those two sources. So that committee has taken that gauntlet, and I appreciate that. Well, they're going to try to advise the community on those persons who are sensitive to public education and those persons who are not. Now, this is all new. We call this a new beginning. In December, over at East Technical High School, and I like to talk about that school for obvious reasons, we had what was called a new beginning. And at that particular time, we had about 2,000 people at that school, and it was snowing outside, but we had buses to bring the people. And we had a show that put fame to shame. All kids were marching, all kids were singing, all kids were acting. We had exhibits all over the school of what our kids were doing. It was the most beautiful thing that you've ever seen. It didn't get the kind of coverage that we thought it should have gotten. The only thing I think that they were concerned about at that time was what kind of a contract was Mr. Carlin gonna get. So one of the things that I would plead with the news media, please give our kids a break. The good ones. You know, it means something to a kid. You know, when I was running... When I was running, and I see Carl Stokes back there, he was an athlete too, 'cause I could outrun him. It meant something when I could look in the paper the next day and see me breaking the tape and have my name mentioned. Because you know what he said? It said, "Now, you're different from these other guys hanging out on the corner. And if you want to maintain what you're doing, you've got to be disciplined. You can't do what they're doing." Other kids deserve that. My mentor Harrison Dillard, he used to take me to school, 'cause he's older than me. But he... But he was an inspiration to me. That was somebody I could look up to. When I grew up, I said I wanted to be just like him. But the problem is that, for example, I was at John F. Kennedy last Friday night. And I had started something there that I'm proud of. You didn't read about this, or I'm gonna tell you. They had an awards night for their kids, all of their outstanding students. It was at the Holiday Inn out in Beechwood. And State Representative John Thompson had an award for each kid that had achieved something. We had pretty close to a thousand people there that night, no coverage. But we were there. You don't know what it meant to these kids to look at a certificate with their name on it from the state of Ohio saying that I have done something, I have accomplished something. One of the privileges that I've had is to go to some of these schools. And I've gone to some of these school places I didn't even know there was a school. So clean, you could eat off the floor. Education being taught. Kids were quiet, the teachers were teaching. Fullerton School, for example, on the west side, Hicks, Montessori School on the west side, West Tech for another. I would have never dreamed what was going on in these schools if I hadn't gone myself. And I would ask some of you, maybe you should do the same thing. You should go and visit some of these schools and see what our kids are doing. We have some great kids, and they need and deserve our support. Lastly, let me say this to you. One of the things that disturbs me, and Ted mentioned it. When I was on Count Montalesco's program, when I was running for this office, suburban I called and said, "Tolliver, why should we be concerned about what's happening in Cleveland School? After all, we don't live in Cleveland, we don't have any children in Cleveland. Why should we be concerned?" And I said to him, "Because you are your brother's keeper." And he said, "What do you mean by that?" I said, "Because if your brother and his children don't get a good education, you will keep them, either in jail, where it costs thirty thousand dollars a year, or on welfare. You can run, but you can't hide, because wherever you go, the tax duplicate will find So if you don't believe in the fatherhood of God and the brotherhood of man, you do believe in saving money. So better that that person become educated so that he can be a taxpayer and not a tax player. I said, "Do you get my meaning?" He said, "Yes, I think I do." So this is where it's at. We have some brains out there. You know, the Negro College Fund has a saying that a mind is a terrible thing to waste. And we have some minds out there that could come up with the cure for cancer. And we might miss that because some of them won't get educated. We, as a country, can't afford that. For the greatest power that we have as a nation is mind power. And we have lost at least a generation of kids because of miseducation. And that has to stop. And that's what we're down there to do, to try to see to it that our kids get what they're constitutionally and morally entitled to. How do you have life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness if you can't read, you can't get a job? That is what's happening in our system. And when Ted mentioned that automatic promotion, you know, that was, that's one of the things that we are stopping. Where a kid can flunk everything from kindergarten through lunch. And when he gets a certain age, he still is promoted even though he has not passed. That has to stop. And we are going to stop it. That's what we're down there for. And further, appreciate the opportunity of being here. But there's no way that we can have a great city without a decent school system. 'Cause we are not going to attract new people with children, young families, to a city that has a poor school system. So if we want this town to grow and be the kind of a city that will attract new industry, that'll cause a rise in this unemployment, we've got to have a system that educates kids. Without that, this city is doomed. And we can talk all we want, but let me tell you, when people are not working and are not educated, then you have problems. And one of the things we have started, we started an equal opportunity employment service set aside so that minority people can have an opportunity to get some money from the system that they pay their taxes for. You cannot have a system unless it equally represents all people. And this is nothing else that we're doing. We've only been in there a little over a hundred days, and I already see the difference in some of the things we're doing. And one of the things that I'm pleased to say, employees can come to us, talk to us about their problems and even criticize us, and it will not be taken lightly. Constructive criticism is what we want, constructive criticism is what we need, and we expect for you to give us that. But on the other hand, hopefully, and sometime in May, we are going to, we're working on a project where we'll stop up the whole Avenue of Euclid and have what we call a parade to support and save our kids. Where the kids will demonstrate their talents and what they can do and show you that they are worth saving. We intend to do that. Hopefully, at that time, we'll have some news media coverage.
Thank you, Stanley. Today at the City Club, we are listening to a report on the Cleveland School System by Ted Bonda, President of the City Club, and Stanley Tolliver, a member of the board. Did I say President of the City Club? I meant to say President of the Cleveland School Board and Stanley Tolliver.
Would you like to trade you out?
No way. I have a few brief announcements, and then we'll get right into our question and answer session, ladies and gentlemen. Let me say that once again, we are happy to host representatives of a number of city schools who are attending this forum as part of our Living Seminars program, which we sponsor, by the way, in cooperation with the Cleveland School Board. And today with us are students from East High Bay, Charles Brush, Euclid, Max Hayes, West Tech, Lincoln West, James Ford Rhodes and JFK. Would you, young people, kindly stand and be recognized by the members of the City Club? These young people will be meeting with Mr. Bonda and Mr. Tolliver following today's forum for a session of their own. Next week, we have two forums scheduled. On Monday, we will be hearing from Owen O'Sullivan, coming to us from New York, where he is head of the Irish Industrial Development Authority. His subject, Ireland, a bridge between Europe and America. And on Friday, a week from today, at our regular City Club forum, the speaker will be the distinguished theologian and author, Dr. Martin E. Marty. I'm sure you will want to attend both of these sessions. Please make your reservations early. Now for the questions and answers. We have two microphones available, one in the front of the room and by Alan Davis, and one in the rear by Bob Conrad. Raise your hand to be recognized and address your question, please, to the member of the board from whom you'd like an answer.
Mr. Bonda, I wonder if you would address a few comments to the role of vocational training in the city of Cleveland, both from the standpoint of what the role would be and what kinds of planning would go into it to develop courses and training programs in the vocational area.
I always have to preface anything I say by saying I'm not an educator. But vocational education, vocational training has become a prime target of ours. And the plans are being drawn right now that, so that next year, we get into a vocational training program such as we had before. We're right now going in the process of the reorganization. It's gonna be done very soon, and we're going to be a unitary system, and all the things that this school system should be, I think they will be. It may be a sketchy answer, but that's all I have for you.
Mr. Bonda, granted, educating our children should be the very highest priority. But I think it's an outrage that the, in this all-American comeback city, the people, including the children, are deprived of national public radio. Would you care to comment?
I wouldn't care to, I will. Incidentally, how would you like to have to listen to him every Thursday night? The problem with WBOE started before I came on the board. It was a problem of economics, and it was dropped. It was to be picked up at that time by the Library Board. There was another entry into the field that confused the issue. Right now, after an editorial by Herb Cam on the fact that we should have it regardless of who is the entrepreneur for it, I wrote a letter to the paper stating the case for the Cleveland Library, which, looking backwards, I thought was the proper one to have it. It's a well-run organization, and it gives us public radio. I'm bending my efforts now to see that we get public radio regardless of who has it. Whatever I can do, we will do, and as I say, the press already has taken a position in that.
This is from Mr. Bonda and Stanley Tolliver. I've been fortunate enough to sit in on classes at the Cleveland Public School that's called the Cleveland School of the Arts and University Circle. I've never seen faculty so dedicated, or students so attentive, very, very absorbed in what they're doing. And you could hear a pin drop. It says, "Under the reorganization, what is to happen to this school and also the Cleveland School of Science on the west side?"
Those are magnet schools that I think you will find will stay around. The school you mentioned for the arts in University Circle is a very unique one. If you notice, the various suburbs are getting together to start the same thing in that area. I wish all of you could visit a number of our schools, and that's one of them. They really do a good job in teaching the arts, and it's something that we've been deficient in. I am glad you mentioned that. I don't have the papers with me right now, but I'm going to start to try and raise some private money for that school, and I'd be happy to call on you at the very beginning. We're going to. I think you'll find we're totally dedicated to have a much better school system. We've gone through a period of a few years in which it was hard to run the schools, regardless of the reason. I think we're going to have the freedom now to do it. The entire community is behind us. I've never had such help, I've never had such offers of help as I'm getting now from everybody in this community, from the top establishment through the mayor and down to all of the citizens. Stan, would you like to...
My name is John.
All of a sudden, you want to be quiet.
Excuse me, my name is John Zayac. I'm a Cleveland City Councilman. One of the reasons I'm standing here today is because the Cleveland Public School System nurtured me through their major work program and dedicated a lot of resources to it. And I graduated in 1969 from John Marshall. So I feel, as you do, that I have a heck of a lot to contribute back to the system. But I will direct my remarks to Stanley and talk nitty gritty because I am in the trenches. In the neighborhood that I represent, 60% of the breaking and entering is committed during the daylight hours. Eighty-eight percent of that is committed by juveniles, and most of that is committed between the months of September and May. Now, I've heard an eloquent enunciation of your agenda, and I understand that you have a lot of problems. But one of the problems that we have out there in the community is dealing with the issue of security. What can you tell me about how you're going about addressing this issue?
Well, first of all, one of the problems that you have addressed is one thing that our Parents Committee is working on. Because you've got to have some home discipline with these kids in order to see to it that they don't commit these kind of things. One of the problems we have found that too many of the parents send their kids to school to be raised and taught. We can't raise them and teach them too. They have to raise them. One of the reason things that you can do is start a program that we're trying to start that I call Bossy Mamas and Dangerous Daddies. Where we cause the parents and persons in the community to help patrol the schools. You say, with the budget cuts and what have it that we have, it's going to be difficult to hire the kind of personnel that you're talking about, John. And you're gonna have to get the community to do some of these things for themselves. I have found that where there is activity with the parents and neighborhood people around the school, that that kind of activity is greatly diminished. One of the reasons why we have these things is because the community has just given to the thugs the schools by default. When I was on Huff Avenue at Martin Luther King when I was campaigning, I asked them, I said, "You tell me why a white man could come down here on Huff and blow up Martin Luther King and nobody see him?" And yet, when he went to Beechwood and tried the same thing, he got caught. The difference is, they had a community there. We don't have one here. And we're gonna have to develop a sense of community, where the people are gonna have to understand that this is their school, this is their community, and they're gonna have to take some responsibility. At the same time, we have to teach the kids to take some pride in their school so that they will take pride in not tearing it up. That's why we're working so hard on the sports program, for one thing, in order to teach the kids some pride and some discipline. So I can't answer your question except that I'm happy to come out there with you and see if we can cause the parents and the community to be more involved with the schools. And incidentally, I'm going to be the commencement speaker at John Marshall next month. I recall that that school was so far away when I was a kid, I had a girlfriend over there and I had to write to her, 'cause I didn't...
I'd like to ask, I'd like to ask either one of the speakers to give us his view as to what the effect would be upon the Cleveland School System and perhaps on public school systems in general in the country if the President Reagan's proposal to allow tax credits to parents who send their children to private schools becomes law.
Another thing that my Parents Committee has already recommended to us is that the Board of Education go on record as opposing that. I think it would be, it would completely annihilate eventually public education. I was aware of Mr. Reagan's position when the statement came that education was not a right but a privilege. And I took that to mean a right to the rich and a privilege to the poor. Now, I don't feel that, I think a person should have a right to send their kids to private school. I don't believe, though, that the public should pay for it, particularly because of the devastation it's gonna cause to public education. And then I think it's a legal problem there too, where particularly if there are parochial schools, is this being subsidized by federal, by public funds, which is a conflict that I've always been taught was illegal between church and state. But to answer your question, I think it'll be devastating to public education. I think it'll come to a point that if you have money, you can pay for education, your kids will be educated. And if you don't, they won't be. The four-and-a-half billion dollars that the government will lose if this goes through in the next five years, as I understand, would have to be made up by denying public education the same funds. So the answer to that question is, I'm opposed to it. We're certainly gonna ask the board to go on record as being opposed to it because I think it would be devastating, if not completely annihilating, to public education. I think it would be devastating, if not completely annihilating, to public education.
This question is to Ted Bonda. Ted, can you give us some of the highlights of the table of organization being presented to the court and how that will improve efficiency and effectiveness of the school board?
Since it's not going to be presented to the court until May 3rd, I can't give you the highlights, except to say it leads directly to a unitary system. I'd like to introduce, by the way, Roger Lulo. We got him from the state. He was one of the top people in the school board of the state, and he's done a marvelous, marvelous job for us. Roger, would you stand up, please? I can't really give you that now. After May 3rd, I'll not only give it to you, but I'll discuss it with you. But the plan is excellent. We met this morning at, I can't help what's in the papers. As Stanley would say, that would be in the papers, but not that I handed out national honor awards, national honor awards yesterday at Joe Gallagher School. The papers have their own ways, don't they, Mr. Cole? Who do you go to?
Mr. Tolliver, some of us have, are putting together an effort to do what we can to help the neighborhoods of Cleveland market their housing. And one of the things that we're constantly up against is how are we going to interest families in living in Cleveland and staying in Cleveland with the school system? And I'm wondering, when can we expect some sort of change that we can present to people to make them feel that the school system is something they do wish to participate in?
Well, one of the things that'll help us is if the industry gives us some money. That's why Ted Bonda's passing his cut. You cannot run a school system when you have a deficit, and you cannot run a school system when you have to lay people off. We got to have some more money. You can help us by passing the tax and at the same time getting industry to do two things, not only give us some money, but to create some jobs, so that these people can have some jobs, so they can work. We always talk about crime, but you know, my grandmother used to always teach me that an idle mind is the devil's workshop. And when people aren't working, this is what causes an atmosphere that says that people don't want to come to Cleveland because of high crime. So those who are in the industry do two things for us, create some jobs for us, help us get some of these programs started. One of the programs that we want started is what we call in-house suspension. You see, one of the things, show you how this board thinks, you don't just put a kid out of school. That's a reward. What you do is take him out the classroom if he's being disruptive, and then put him somewhere else where he can be taught. Now, we need money to do that, and thus far, we haven't been able to get it. So the turnaround will come when we get more cooperation from the industry as well as from the community, by way of getting money so we can do the things that we want done. And I'll tell you this, you're invited to come to any of our meetings, sir, and give us your suggestions, because God knows we need them.
Can I add on to that? You have my permission. I would like to correct something. Thank you, Stanley. I would like to correct an impression that I think is wrong in this community. All our schools are not bad. We have some absolutely wonderful schools. We have 76, 77,000 children in the school. 16,000 are absent most of the time, but the rest of them are getting a good education. I'll defy any of you people, educators or not, to go to our fundamental school, and you'll tell me that's as good as any school, public or private, in this entire area. Go to the Alexander Graham Bell School, for the handicapped and the autistic. The whole county uses it. There isn't a finer school anywhere. I went to the Joe Gallagher School yesterday. It's a great place. Truly, it is, and people are learning. So this idea that the school system is bad is really not true. There's a lot of bad things in it, but it's also giving an education. I really, the negative attitude always bothers me, and it surprised me. When I got in, it was going to be a bad school system. It's just as good as it is bad.
Mr. Bonda, I would like to know that, I'm a junior from Max S. Hayes, and all the trades there are three-year, you had to take for three years, but they only had the 11th and 12th grade there. And I wanted to know why would they drop the 10th grade out of there if you only, if all the trades are for three years?
I didn't, I didn't hear the question.
All right. All the trades that we take up at Max S. Hayes, you had to take for three years, and they only have the 11th and 12th grade there. And I wanted to know why would they drop the 10th grade out if all the trades are there have to be taken for three years?
I'll have to give you the same answers I gave on the vocational education program. It should not have happened, and in the future, in my, if my way of thinking, it will not happen. We're going to concentrate on vocational education, and if it takes the 10th, 11th, and grade to do it, we will do it that way. I promise you that. You and me together?
Yeah.
I think you, I think you the pepper. What else has your grandmother told you?
She told me to vote for you.
I'd like to ask a question of both Board members. Can you comment in any way on what your hopes are in regard to the court, and secondly, what your expectations are? And then independently, what, what do you expect your deficits will be in the next fiscal year if you don't have a tax change?
Going backwards on that one, the expecting the deficit is hard to determine whether we have a tax, different tax base or tax increase or not, because we don't know what we're going to get from the federal government, and we don't know what we're going to get from the state government. When we started this year, we expected that we could live on the monies that we were getting. We truly did, but we were cut down by some, I guess it's almost $30 million from the state, wasn't it, Dave? And we didn't know that. It was cut down in three stages. We've now lost close to $10 million from the federal government, so it's hard to say that. Expectations from the court. My fond belief is that the court will accept this reorganization plan. By June, we will have a unitary system, and I hope that within a year or two, if it's at all possible, the court will free us from their jurisdiction, and we can then run the school system as we want to. There's a number of cities around the state that have been under court orders for something like 11 years, and they're all protesting now, and they want to be freed from that. And none of them have really the involvement that they have in this, in this district. I was careful.
I'm afraid, ladies and gentlemen, that our time has run out on us. I want to thank Ted Bonda and Stanley Tolliver for a most stimulating and informative session today. We appreciate your attendance, ladies and gentlemen. We hope to see you next Friday, and today's City Club Forum is now adjourned.